Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's me again, that crazy guy with the lazy eye with him and I news.com. And we are actually getting our live stream set up. We're going to be interviewing today, uh, the incumbent of Michael Pierceville, who's been on city council for many years and uh, he's running for reelection. Uh, before I get this live stream started, I do want to say, everybody, please make sure you do share this video, comment that you shared and after the uh, end of the live stream, I will be looking at the shares and who commented, shared and I'm going to pick a name and the winner is going to get a free combo pack from Boys Burgers. That's actually a family pack, five fries, five drinks and five boogers, folks. So can't beat that with a stick. So I want to shout out, thank you for Boys Burgers for uh, sponsoring the meet the city candidates of Hemet. And today we're meeting with Michael Pierceville and uh, Mark Lintain is going to be asking some questions. I don't know what kind of questions he's asked because Mark's always pulling something up his sleeve, folks. So I know Michael Pierceville is always prepared, uh, he's the man for the job. So we're going to go ahead and get this party started. And Mike, if you were, or uh, Mark, just call him, boy. Yeah, we're going to go ahead and turn everything over to you, Mark. Uh, Michael, I appreciate you uh, participating in the second part of our candidate, uh, meet the candidates, how should I say? And glad to be here for you. And John Strangus, I want to say thank you as well too for running the camera for us again.
And our buddy.
And you know, if the camera can flip over here and show our, uh, my sidekick over here, we got Adam McQueen.
Adam.
He's our sound tech guy. And I'm the video tech guy. I'm the jack of all trades, but master of none, folks. So I appreciate you guys on the team coming out and helping us do this live stream. So make sure you do share this video, comment that you shared and uh, we'll be, like I say, picking names and giving away some free food. Mark, the mic is yours.
Michael, first of all, thank you so much for meeting with me again. I, I don't, I, I think I told you this earlier, but on camera, I, I have told several people, I said, I think, Michael, I, I call him the, the dark knight because I could never get two words out of it. But the last two interviews have been wonderful. They've, they've been expository. You've given us a lot of information and I, I know I appreciate it and, and I, I think the constituents do as well.
And I hope so.
Uh, so we've talked to a few people, we've gotten some questions. Uh, the, the one thing that, that came out that struck me is you're a conservative, we, we talked about that, but one of the biggest, one of your biggest donors is the firefighters union.
Yeah.
Why, why, and, and how did that come about?
So yeah, it's, it's kind of interesting. So when I first interviewed them with them, uh, when I ran for election the first time around 2016, when I sat down across the table from the union reps, the first thing I said to them was, I'm not a union guy, but I can tell you that I will fight to protect and keep the Hemet Fire Department locally controlled. And I've kept my promise with that. So I, I understand, you know, I was a reserve police officer for a city police department and I understand that the, you know, being able to have that local control of your public safety.
Right. And you were, did you, you were a Navy, you're a Navy veteran of five years.
Navy veteran also, yeah.
And did you, did, were you in any military police?
I was, yeah. I was a master of arms in the Navy, which is the Navy's military police.
Got it. And the, the thing that I always appreciated is that, that you've brought that up before that, that point, but you, you wanted to ensure that our police department and our fire department stays local and it's not contracted.
Absolutely, yeah.
Why do you think that's important? Just as an aside.
Yeah, the importance for me is knowing that, one, we've got the best trained guys that know our community and they um, you know, come to Hemet and work day in and day out to protect Hemet. And um, the, the biggest thing from, I look at it from the, the local control part of it is from a budgetary standpoint, we're getting, the amount of service that we get for the cost is far better than what, when I, you know, like when they con, when a previous council went to contract with Cal Fire.
Yes.
We weren't getting the same amount of service under the terms of that contract for the same cost. And so when, when that contract was to start, it was going to be cheaper for the city, but over the long term, it would have been more, way more expensive and we wouldn't have gotten it.
So you can actually quantify those kinds of things and say, this is what we're getting for this amount of money.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's, that's a great point. Uh, maybe a thorny issue, but I want to bring up the dreaded, I always joke and call it the dreaded median.
Yeah, me too.
What, what, uh, what do you think of the median thus far and what was your role, if, if anything, in either fighting it or helping it to come about?
The, so this, the whole median project started years ago.
Before 2016.
Many, many years before 2016. This has been a long project that has been um, drawn out over many, many years. And so when I was a candidate in 2016, I was going to the um, where Caltrans was bringing out all the, all the boards and had everything. I was still a candidate at that time. And um, so you know, it's, it's one of those that it started before I got elected originally in 2016. And then in 2017, it was progressing, 2018, the year I was mayor, um, it was, it was even more um, you know, a thorn to my side.
Further along, okay.
But it was further along.
Further along the process.
The problem is, is that when this all started, there was timelines that the city had the opportunity to have a better chance at stopping the project, um, when it, if it was a, you know, file lawsuit against the state.
Right.
But the city missed those steps and that was prior to me being on council.
So those would have been times where they could have maybe forced injunctions to stop.
Correct.
And not casting his versions, but that was before you came in.
Yeah, that all would have needed to be done before 2016 or, or during 2016 because I didn't get sworn in until December.
When you were still actively running, okay.
Yeah.
What do you think of it now? I mean, what, what have you got, had any positive feedback or is it just, what do you, what do you?
I haven't had any positive feedback on it. Um, you know, I'm, I try to listen to, if there's anything, right? So a lot of the arguments that when I met with Caltrans, the arguments were, this is going to be bad for business. It's going to increase traffic congestion and we're still going to see pedestrians jaywalking and we're going, and it's going to be hard on businesses because some businesses are harder impacted than others.
Sure, if you have to turn and you can't.
Because of, because of, you know, where the turn pockets are located. And we tried and tried and tried to get them, when I say them, Caltrans, to concede on some stuff and, and every, at every step of the way, Caltrans' response was, this is a safety project. We tried to get them to do an environmental impact report. They said, this is a safety project. We don't need to, we're exempt. And it's, it's one of those things that, you know, we said, and I said from the beginning is that, look, this is going to push cars off of Florida Avenue and Caltrans said, good, that's what we want. Because if you look at it from a property owner's standpoint, right, this Florida Avenue is a state route, it's owned by the state of California.
Right.
And from a property owner's standpoint, that's good for them because then it limits their, reduces their liability if anything were to happen. So if they reduce traffic flow, it reduces wear and tear on the road, it reduces liability for more traffic congestion and that kind of thing. But what does that do? It shifts the burden now onto our local streets. So we're seeing more traffic on Acacia, more traffic on Latham and more traffic on Devonshire.
That's a very interesting point.
But you know, and the.
And the lessening, concomitant lessening in business because of Florida.
Yeah, so we even, I mean, we, and this is one of the arguments that we made is that this is going to have detrimental impacts on, we've seen that. We saw um, one of our local businesses come to council, pleading with the city council to try to do something to help their business because they've seen, they saw a 50% reduction in their business.
Can I just ask, was that the gas station?
It was, yeah.
I, I had heard about that, it was just the tail end of my being with the newspaper before quitting.
It was, so their, their 50% reduction occurred because there wasn't a turn pocket for people going westbound to turn into their.
And of course, gas stations, just go up another half block for a few cents more. Okay, I'm just going to pay.
And that's, and that's been the negative side of it. The other, you know, the other, I mentioned people jaywalking. I see more jaywalkers now than ever. They walk halfway, they stand in the middle, they walk down the middle on the median and then they cross.
You and I spoke, I think it was two weeks ago, literally I've seen now twice, once a woman with a baby in her arms, another one, a woman pushing a carriage with a baby, one little girl with her and a baby in a carriage. And down the median, I keep thinking, somebody who's out of control and you're done, you're done.
Very dangerous.
So you, you guys are right on the money. Uh, because I'd had, as we spoke about, some people said, well, you know, see, Michael should have done this and Michael should have done that, but obviously.
Michael tried to do what Michael could, considering when I came into this mess that was, you know, it's unfortunate, but there was other council members that were part of uh, the Riverside County Transportation Commission where they had, when they, when they go to these meetings, Caltrans was there. A Caltrans rep was there and those conversations could have, had been, had been.
Then.
Yeah.
Right, not, not after the fact.
And unfortunately, they, it, it, we weren't helped.
Right. So I, I, having been with a newspaper for almost, two different newspapers, almost a year and a half, and, but just being here in, in Hemet for about two years and not in your district, but I, I can say that I think it's been a positive first term of almost four years. But, so tell us some of the things that you would like to trumpet as far as your accomplishments and what you'd like to do in the coming.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I, I, some of, a couple of the things that I've, that I've, that I'm proud of, um, over the last, past few years is, is getting some things done, some, some projects done. Um, one of the, one of the big ones was the Stetson Bridge. So Stetson Bridge, actually, half of the, half of the street is on, in my district, the other half is in District Four, which was Bonnie Wright's old district.
Right.
Um, that bridge for years has been, had a Band-Aid put on it. Uh, it's been, it was an old wood bridge.
Oh.
So you know, it goes over a stormwater canal and it was wood. And so over the years, that bridge has, has deteriorated over time. And when I first got elected in 2016 and I got a report to hear the condition of the bridge, I pushed our city manager at the time and then the next city manager and then finally Chris, under Chris Lopez's watch, a city manager, uh, we were able to get the project done. But there was a lot of hurdles, so I was proud of that, that we were, you know, and we had to shut, we had to close Stetson Avenue for a time because it was deemed so unsafe. And my, my fear was that a truck driving over it and it collapsed. And um, so that's, that's the big reason why we shut Stetson, Stetson Avenue off so that, to prevent people. And we, you know, we started with putting the stop sign to get people to go slower over the bridge.
Right.
Instead of, yeah, and it's, so that's one of the accomplishments that I'm proud of that, you know, got completed.
It's fully viable. I didn't realize that, that whole backstory on that.
Yeah, and it was here, it had been in the works for probably 10 years.
Right. And, and what other things would you, would you say, hey?
So another, my, during my term as, when I was mayor in 2018, um, I went before the Riverside County Flood Control Commission. Uh, they held a meeting in Hemet. They do their meetings in different cities and different locations and they happened to be in Hemet and I went to that meeting to request dollars from them. Um, and I was successful. I was able to get a half a million dollars to go toward the Seattle Basin. Uh, so, and, and the reasoning for that is the Seattle Basin, every time we get significant rainfall, the Seattle Basin fills up.
Yeah.
And when it fills, it creates flooding issues on Seattle Street.
Sure.
Uh, parts of Costin and then in the neighborhood on the north side of Seattle Basin. So um, you know, I'm proud that I was able to get half a million dollars, not for a permanent solution, but for temporary fixes.
Right.
One of those things that we did is that every time it would rain, the city would get out there with the, with the water pumps and they would run the water hose across Costin Avenue, forcing Costin Avenue to be shut down.
Right.
And so when you've got an elementary school and a middle school and a high school just down the street on Costin.
It's chaos.
It creates, yeah, and it creates um, headaches for the local residents and especially when people have been at, at work for a long day and now they're coming home and now they got to take a detour, an extra mile or so out of their way just to get home. So we were able to get, close the, close Costin down for about a week. Uh, city crews went out, dug a trench, laid hose underneath the street.
Right.
So that then we can connect um, as part of a temporary solution. There's still, it's, it's all part of the, the master drainage plan. Uh, we've got to get the Ramona Creek project underway to get the, the downline wastewater, or not wastewater, but floodwater control taken care of.
Right, so long-term, that's the.
Yeah, that's the long-term solution right now, but it was a short-term.
Any idea years out, how many years that's?
It's going to be up to the developer on when they start building that project out.
Got it. Uh, several people brought this up. So question, what do you think of the way in which the Measure U funds were allocated? That's the first part of a multi-part question.
Okay, well, yeah, and I can, it's, they've been allocated over the years. So Measure U went into effect in um, April of 2017 is when we first saw.
So you were fairly new.
Yeah, I had just gotten sworn in in December of 2016.
And I would just add, just very quickly, that although conservative, you know, obviously a new tax somewhat, but the focus of it being public safety with police and fire. So go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so when that went into effect, the, the first night of um, my first council meeting, actually, the, there was a resolution by the previous council that stated that uh, they would allocate that funding for public safety.
Right.
Police and fire. And it would be split two-thirds to the police department and one-third to the fire department.
Got it.
And that was based on a $10 million projection. So the police and fire put down, put their plan, the police chiefs, the police chief and the fire chief put a plan together on that conservative figure of $10 million and being split uh, to police and fire. And so that plan was, you know, it's, it's, that's the plan that was in place, right? So it, it utilized $10 million is basically what it was, what it was based off of on that revenue projection. So we pre-funded um, police and fire upfront, knowing that that money was going to come in and then we would replace that, um, as that money, Measure U money, that tax revenue came, came into the city. So we pre-funded police department so they can get a jumpstart. We pre-funded the fire department so they could get a jumpstart. So back to the, the resolution.
Right.
Measure U is a general fund tax. It needed 50% plus one to, to be enacted, which it got, it got over 60%. At the end, at the end of the tally, I think it came in a little over 61% of the residents.
Right, and as Carly Meyer had rightly pointed out, okay, you have 60, more than 60% of the Hemet population.
Yeah, and so it was, because it was originally touted out as a, as a public safety tax in the, in the primary.
And in that guise, it failed.
And it did, because at that, at that time, it needed a two-thirds vote.
Got it.
To be a special tax. And so the previous council had, you know, they, they all signed on to a resolution that said, hey, we will, we promise that we will use that money for public safety. Well, so fast forward then, uh, the election happens, I get sworn in. The new council, when we got seated, we all took, took that same stance and we said that we will sign on to a new resolution, reiterating the previous resolution, that we would then utilize that money for public safety, police and fire.
Right.
To be split. And so that resolution is still in place today and it hasn't been removed, it hasn't been repealed, it has, it's still there.
Right.
That the money would be allocated to solely for police and fire.
And that would be two-thirds police and one-third fire.
Correct.
Now, interesting, uh, you know, they always say non-binding resolutions have no teeth, but you pointed out that with the right power balance, for want of a better term, on the council, uh, that could become binding and you could do, so, so tell us a little bit about.
So we still have, Measure U is an ordinance. It was, as it was passed by the voters, so it becomes, now an ordinance becomes a law in the city. And so resolutions are easier ways to get something done, but not have that ordinance impact.
Right, the strength of it.
The strength of an ordinance. And so uh, that's what this, this was. It was a resolution that can be changed. So if a new council.
And changed, by the way, and I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it, resolutions can also be changed more easily than ordinance.
Change, absolutely. Yeah, the resolutions can be changed more easily and passed with a, with a two-thirds simple majority, three, three, three council members can vote to change it. So with that resolution, if a new council, if the, if the, when the new council gets elected, if it changes that majority-minority structure, it could, in a sense, rescind that and come in with a new resolution on how to deal with Measure U funding.
Right, let me ask you, just sort of as an aside to the, uh, so, so let's say the makeup of the, the council does change. Do you think that it should be revisited? Do you think that?
Well, and I'm glad you asked that, because I brought that up when, when, if you, we back up a little bit to this year's budget.
Right.
Right, there was conversation in, when the budget was passed on a 3-2 vote, me being one of the dissenting votes, um, and my dissenting vote was strictly on the fact that we took a position with that resolution that said, we will utilize that money for two-thirds police and one-third fire.
Right, and the, interestingly, the, the, and I, I'm Italian, we keep interrupting, sorry. But, but I did want to point out that the two, it was not necessarily a popular thing, but you thought it was the right thing and the two were yourself and Carly Meyer.
Right.
Right. And what were you trying to do with that dissenting, dissenting vote and what were you, what was the message that you were trying?
The message was, I'm opposed to defunding public safety because that is what the budget did. So if you look at the plan, right, I talked about the plan, the Measure U plan that was presented by the police chief and the fire chief originally when I got elected and that was Dave Brown, who has since retired, and Scott Brown, who's the fire chief. So they came with that plan and the plan had to increase the number of boots on the ground, have, get more cops hired so that we can get more programs to handle the nuisance, the nuisance crimes, right? The vagrancy and, and the petty crimes and that kind of thing, right? So that had the ability to get more boots on the ground and get more police hired.
Right.
And at the same time, it was also to get, one, our paramedic program fully implemented because at the time I got elected, Station Four, which is in my district, was an EMS unit only. So it had, it was a firefighting unit with a, with a fire engine, but it was staffed with an EMT. So they didn't have paramedics onboard at Station Four yet. And so that was part of that plan, was to get all of our stations staffed with paramedics. So now we do, but what it's done this year in this budget for this year, 2020 and 2021, is it took away uh, the fire apparatus, the fire engine and fire suppression from Station Five.
I was just going to say.
So we have now just a paramedic unit. So it's a squad unit, basically, a paramedic and an EMT. It's that man, Station Five, with no fire suppression.
Right, and as I think Carly Meyer had pointed out, that, that, you know, we voted for Measure U.
Yeah, exactly. And so that's what.
And that's what my position was, is that we're, we've passed a, a public safety, we
passed a general fund tax that we promised to use for public safety and here we are, we're defunding the police.
Defunding, right.
In a sense. Now, when I, and let me make, be very clear on when I say we defunded the police.
Sure.
One, first, I didn't vote for that and that was my argument, is that we're defunding the police because we had, we had, we had funded vacant positions.
Right.
So there were positions that were funded as part of the budget that were not filled. And so it gave the police chief the ability to do an ongoing recruitment to fill those positions. But for the, for the, for the budget to be balanced and, and for, for Chris and staff to get that budget.
Chris Lopez.
Chris Lopez, the city manager. To get the budget passed and, and get it balanced without having to draw down more reserves, they had to take away those positions so that they're not on the books. Well, in the meantime, how that, what that does is now, if you go on the city's website, you can see that there, we're not recruiting for police officers.
Right, it says, it says it right.
So, and that's what that was, the, the intent of that was for getting cops hired, to get more cops. And so that's what I was opposed to. And that's why, that was the main reason why I voted it down.
Now, sort of downstream again from that, and I think Eddie has a question, so Eddie, just give me one second because I, I just sort of take us inside baseball in a, in a sense that, so is it a simp, something as simple when we talk about the balance of power and, and not trying to cast aspersions on anyone, any of the five on the, on the council, but is it sort of, something is, is cut and dried as we're the three, whoever the three happen to be on any particular issue, we're the three, this is a, we're, we're for or we're against.
It can't, so, yeah, and so with the measure, and with the Measure U resolution, what, if, if there's a shift in the majority, that can come, the majority could say, we want that general fund tax to be strictly going into the general fund and to be used for any general fund expense. And so that's, that's, you know, a roll of the dice on who gets elected.
Right.
So my position hasn't changed. That Measure U for me is still for public safety. We need to have a conversation on what that looks like.
Right, what, what the definition of public safety is.
Yeah, because public safety is not just police and fire.
You rightly pointed that out before, exactly.
It doesn't cover just the police.
Tell us what you mean by that.
Yeah, so public safety is the safety of the public, right? And, and the police department and the fire department is not the only, they are not, why, yes, you know, the police department enforces the laws and the fire department responds to the medical aid calls.
Right.
But how do we, how can we look further at what public safety really is? So I look at, I, I'm a, I consider myself a risk manager, right? I want, I want to manage risk. And so how does the city do that? By um, the, on the big picture scale, right? So you look at, one of the things to manage risk is we look at where, when we have lawsuits and how do we reduce the number of lawsuits that the city gets? I know Carly has mentioned the city attorney budget uh, being over $2 million. Well, the city attorney, the more times the city gets sued over things, that's more hours that are being billed and, and.
Billed.
To sell, to protect uh, the, the city and protect those taxpayer dollars. But it's more money going into the city attorney's pocket.
Right.
And so how do we look at that, right? And so I look at that there's ways that we can look at public safety, keeping the safe, the public safe is um, not just with the police department and not just with the fire department and still maintain those staffing levels based on the original plan put out for Measure U. And so how does that look, right? So I want to be able to see if, if you, you know, you've got um, somebody walking their dog down the, down the sidewalk, I want to make sure that they're going to, you know, leave their house and walk their dog and then get home safe.
Get home safely.
And not trip and fall because cities are getting sued over trip and fall claims, right? So I look at it, it's cheaper to, if, if we've got a sidewalk that's in disrepair and needs to be repaired and it's going to cost $6,000, well, I think that's $6,000 well-spent versus defending a 20, 30, 50.
50, 60, 100, 200.
Exactly, claim against the city.
Right.
So I, I want to be able to protect, make the, protect those, not only our citizens, but protect the city's finances.
Right.
Because that's, that's money, when we, if we spend a hundred thousand dollars on a lawsuit, that's a hundred thousand, or defending a lawsuit, that's a hundred thousand dollars that the city can't use on another program.
Right, and the complexion of that conversation on the definition of what constitutes public safety and those kinds of issues.
Yeah, and that's what needs to be addressed.
The complexion of that changes depending on the makeup of the five-person body, the city council.
It could, but, and it goes back to the, the resolution that's in play now. If a new council comes in and they say, we want to see Measure U money going to X, Y, and Z, which has nothing to do with public safety.
Right.
Well, if they change, if they get rid of that resolution.
Right.
If it only takes three to be able to do it.
If three out of five happen to say, we want it for murals.
Yeah.
And three out of the five that say it, then all of a sudden, I'm not saying that they would, but I'm saying.
But that's, but that's exactly it. Measure U money could be redirected for that.
Right, because it's a general.
Which was, which was not the intent originally.
Exactly. And Eddie, did you have, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was actually, uh, Mike on here?
Yeah, I was actually, uh, mic on here, okay. Uh, the question I had about the Measure U money, do you feel that some of this Measure U money has been not used properly? Uh, I know I had some people comment on here on the prior livestream talking about, you know, a lot of the Measure U money, a lot of people say it's been misbudgeted. What is your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so my, I don't believe that, when Measure U was taken, when the whole Measure U thing, they, the city staff created a split on Measure U, like, all the Measure U revenue was put into this pot, put into this pile, and the general fund was put in, over here. And all the police new hires that were hired under Measure U, they're paid and all their money was taken out over on Measure U. And at the same time, the employees, the police that have been here and the fire that have been here, prior to Measure U, they're all general fund employees. When I first got elected, and this was two city managers ago that I had a conversation with, is that we should take the $10 million, split it two-thirds to the police and two-thirds to the fire, and don't have separate, this is Measure U, here is your police budget, and here is your fire budget, based on that projected revenue coming in. So to keep it, to keep it easy and make it easier for the accounting. Because the way it is now, and I've talked to, I've talked to Lorena about it, it's, it's very difficult, the way, the way they're doing it, to, to account for that.
And Lorena?
Lorena is the finance director.
Finance director.
For, for the city.
He was also talking about, Mark, he was mentioning about the city attorney. Now, you voted no on the city attorney getting the $2.4 million raise?
Well, so let me be clear on that. The, the city attorney's budget, when we, so a, a year ago, when we approved the budget, we approved for a six months of the city, we basically cut the city attorney's budget down to, I want to say it was like 600, 650,000 for the, for the city attorney budget. But it was passed, that it was, that was, that we would re, look at it in six months. So basically, that was a six-month budget, a six-month budget. Well, here's, so here's what happens, right? Is that the city attorney, every time the city gets sued, or every time city staff goes direct to the city attorney, those billable hours tick up, right? And that's what drives the city attorney's budget up. So, you know, it's, it's defending lawsuits against the city, it's, you know, projects that need more city attorney time, those are driving the, the costs up. Here's what needs to happen, is that we need to have, a city our size should not be for putting out $2.1 million in billable hours for a city our size.
And Michael, just real quickly, just to piggyback on that until you sort of expand on that answer. Uh, back, I feel like an old man, back 38, 39 years ago, when I started, I was covering South Philadelphia, Philadelphia City Council and politics, they used to have, they called SOS. So that, you, you pay upfront for a suite of services.
Right.
And, and so that's essentially the same thing that I'm finding here. So you may pay X as a standard or as a payment, this was your first, but what we're, because of the fact that we're not being prudent, which you were just talking about, now we're having to pay billable hours for things that aren't covered in that.
Those are the above and beyond.
Exactly.
So we, we do, I mean, we, the city, we have a retainer that we pay with, with the city attorney's office.
Right.
Who is, our city attorney is a contract attorney. I've had conversations with all our city managers that we've had since I've been on council, about what it would look like if we have an in-house attorney who is an employee of the city.
Right.
One, they're now more vested in the city. And, two, they can handle the day-to-day operations, because whether they just sit at their desk, or they're fielding questions with staff, or, or dealing with whatever, you know, if it's municipal citations that come in, they did, the, the staff attorney would then deal with that. What, you know, so again, if they're just sitting at their desk, they're getting paid. If they're dealing with issues related, they're getting paid the same amount.
Right.
So I've asked to, to have a look at that.
And again, that conversation.
You know, I agree with Michael there, I mean, because right now, the city attorney, how much is the city attorney, uh, city attorney actually being made a year? What's the average for the city attorney?
Yeah, we, you know, we could, I, I, if you, from a city our size, we could get a newer attorney, um, that would, we'd probably be looking at an annual salary close to about 200,000 bucks.
200,000 dollars versus.
But that's, but, yeah, so mind you, that would just for one, the salary for one person. A city attorney's office is going to need a paralegal, I mean, there's, there's other support staff that goes along with it.
But you could still get it cheaper than 2.4 mil, right?
Yeah, I believe.
I need to find out how I could be a city attorney and make that much money, you know?
And again, Michael, they.
Get your law degree.
Right?
And again, this is no, casting no aspersions on anyone on the council, but that conversation and the need and the ability to have the conversation, bring the costs down and put in effective measures, that is only actuated when the mix council.
Yeah, so you've got to, to be able to get rid of the city attorney and go with it either contract with somebody else, it's got, it takes a majority vote of the council. And so there was, Carly actually made a motion to terminate services with our current city attorney.
Right.
And got a second from me, and when it went to a vote, it failed on a 3-2 vote. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, when I look at the, the budget and the previous budgets, those city attorney's costs have ticked up over the years.
Right.
You know, and I, and I hear, and I've had people tell, you know, I've, I've heard it out there, is that, you know, our city attorney has institutional knowledge, the term that I've heard thrown out there. But really, what does that mean? And two, are we still getting, because here's the thing, is the city attorney is a fiduciary to the city.
Right.
And so with that fiduciary, it's, it's, it's having that fiduciary relationship with the city, you've got to put the best interests of the city first and foremost.
Right.
And in my opinion, I don't, there's, there's things that I've seen or, or have witnessed in, in my time on council, that I think that maybe that hasn't happened fully, to the fullest extent that it should.
Right, and I, I, again, I'm, I'm just, if it seems like I'm harping on this, I, I just, because I, I don't know that you can blame the city attorney at all. I've had conversations during the Tucson versus Hemet lawsuit, that, that the attorneys for Eric Vail's law firm, they were, they were great to speak with. But what I'm getting at is that if you're not happy with that, and I don't mean you personally, I mean, the city, the people looking at it and saying, well, my gosh, for, you know, much less money we can get, then that anger or that unhappiness needs to be directed at the city council to change the makeup of city council and keep people and retain people or, or elect people that are of that sort.
And I don't dislike Eric, and I don't just, it's, I mean, he's doing his job, he's, he's doing what he's being dealt.
100%.
You know, he's, he's dealing with the hand that he's being dealt.
Right.
And so, you know, he's, he's, he's protecting the city.
No, exactly.
Based on his ability to be able to do so, and his firm, he's got a lot, large firm.
Right.
And they've got lawyers that handle very, a vast, different type of law. So, you know, it's, that's one of the benefits that we get. But, you know, we just, last year, we approved to, to join the, the JPIA, the Joint Powers Authority, to get our risk management and that under control.
Right.
And so I think that, and part of our, for our insurance, for the city's insurance.
I was there when several concerns came in and made the pitch to, to, right.
Yeah, so I, I think that was a good move, as far as, and I think that there'll be some cost savings with that.
Right. Also, speaking of the, you were talking about the nuisance factor and some of the nuisance crimes, we do have a homeless population, and, and I do want to get to, to that question and also just how to bring in businesses here. But, uh, one of the things as far as feeding people and helping people that someone mentioned to me, and they said, well, ask Michael about Farm to Family, so, speaking about people that are in need.
Yeah, it is.
And what, what is Farm to Family, and how did you become a part of it?
Farm to Family is, is a federal program that was put out by the president's administration. And how I got involved with it is that I got a phone call from my church pastor a few weeks ago and said, hey, we've, we're, we're partnering with some other churches in the valley, and I need your help. And so I, you know, I, I responded to the call.
Sure.
And, um, so basically, there's Farm to Family, it's a federal program, it provides food, fruit and vegetables, fresh fruit, fresh, fresh vegetables, proteins, dairy products, all packaged up, and it's given away free to people in need. And so there's really no criteria, like, it's not income qualifying or anything, it's you show up, you give us your name and your address, and, you know, an email address and a, basically, give us your name and your contact information, and here's free food.
Here's free food.
Uh, this program is going on until the, until it runs out, basically, and I don't know when it's going to run out.
Right.
But, so my church is, and, and the churches that are involved with it here in the valley, every Tuesday morning is when they get the delivery. So the delivery is made to one of the churches here in the valley, and all the churches go out and pick it up. Uh, so for, for where I'm at, and the location that I'm at is Inland Valley Baptist Fellowship, which is at 2700 West Johnston Avenue.
West Johnston.
So right next to Mary Henley Park.
Oh.
Every Tuesday morning, starting at 10:30 is when it starts, and the food is available until it runs out. And so what we've seen over the, and we just started this two weeks ago, and what we've seen is that we're getting on average about 150 boxes of food, so, 150.
And I would imagine with the pandemic and where that, and it goes, pretty quickly.
Yeah, and so it is, I, I think it's a huge blessing, especially when you've got some people that are in need and are struggling, a way to get some food that can last, you know, it depends on how big your family is, but if you've got a large family, we've got some where we've given three boxes to a family because they've got, it's a larger family, and so, you know, they've got, you know, multiple children, or it's multiple generations in a household, and so we want to.
Right, so we've got programs out there, we, we are trying to address it, there's Carly Meyer's Nowhere Goes, a great program, I thought that was very innovative. So what, again, if we get the right balance, and we, we get a, a, a three to two majority, let's say, on, on the council, what are some of the things you would like to see implemented as far as the nuisance crimes and the home, really the homelessness and?
I want to see, I, I want our police department's ability to be, to get, to hire more officers to be able to get more cops on the street, more boots on the ground. I, I want to see Station 5 open back up with a fire engine.
Definitely.
Get that one fully manned again.
Definitely.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, so those are the, the first two, is to get those. I want, we, we need to have a serious conversation about our city attorney expenses, and how do we get a handle on that? One, people need to stop suing the city over everything, the city doesn't have the money.
Yeah, it's almost like the same.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't help, because every dollar that we spend defending a lawsuit is a dollar that can't be used.
Not spent on prevention.
On other things. Um, so, so that's my focus, because I, I'm really focused on three things in Hemet, still, is that public safety factor, the quality of life for everybody that lives in Hemet, and economic development. Because we can't, we still need to get business to come here and want to stay here, and they're only going to stay here if we shop there, if we patronize local businesses.
Sure.
Spend these dollars locally to get, you know, keep that money locally. And we need, so to, to get the, the businesses to want to come, one, they've got to know it's safe, that you can safely open up a business, because if you've got, you know, you talk about the homeless, if you've got a homeless person sleeping on your doorstep, it's kind of bad for business. And so we need to be able to get a handle on that. The state of California doesn't help the cities.
Yeah, they're sucking up every dollar in Sacramento.
And everything, and you know, and it's, and I've heard people, and we can go on and on, I mean, I could talk for hours on this, on this, but, but there's, you know, that we, we're, we've got to play that hand that we're dealt also, and, and we've got to be able to do it efficiently with the tax dollars that we receive. So Sacramento doesn't help cities like Hemet. I've talked to city leaders up and down the state of California that have cities similar in demographics and size to Hemet, and they're dealing with the same issues.
Right.
You know, the question, a big, a big question that I get, why do they come to Hemet? Well, especially, you know, like, people that are being released from prison, why do they come to Hemet? It's more, it's more affordable, so they go where they can afford, because a lot of times, people that are coming out of prison don't have a whole lot of money. And they go where families at. So if you've got, you know, and, and with rents and housing prices through the roof in California right now, if you've got somebody that's paying, say in LA or Orange County or whatever, they're paying, you know, $2,500 a month for a one-bedroom apartment, you can come to Hemet and get that for a fraction of that cost.
Sure.
So that's what drives people, it's affordability drives people here in Hemet.
Right, economics, and, and you also had a good point about the types of taxes where people are transients, they're driving through Hemet, but we can raise a good amount of money from.
Yeah, we do, so we get, you know, all, the cities talk about leakage, and those, those tax dollar leakages, right? And so, you know, we get, in Hemet, we get, we get leakage from Santa Sino, we get a lot of it from Santa, there's, you know.
Thank you, Santa Sino.
So there's a lot of people that are, live in Santa Sino that shop and eat and that in Hemet, because we've got, you know, businesses in, in Hemet that Santa Sino doesn't have. I want to give it to Santa Sino, they're, they are growing, and they're, you know, they're doing a good job at, at growth. So they're bringing in new business, that when they bring in, it's more difficult for us to bring in that same business, right? So, so we get that leakage from Santa Sino, we get leakage from Menifee, we get, you know, leakage from all over. But at the same time, residents in Hemet are shopping in Santa Sino, they're shopping in Menifee, they're shopping in Temecula Marietta.
Right.
Because we don't have what those other cities have, and so we're getting that leakage also.
So that's the, that, that, and that was the point. And I think, buddy Eddie, did you have?
Well, you were talking about the homeless situation, and I want to hear what people are complaining about, and we can get around this quality of society. Uh, one of the issues in, in the city that a lot of people are complaining about is the convicts getting released from prison, and basically, why are they coming to Hemet? You know, Hemet is being paid, you know, to receive all these, and I want to stress to the people that Hemet does not give them money, and I know my peers will actually back me up on this. The main reason why a lot of these criminals, these ex-prosecutions, or ones that can't have a parole, people are like, why are, why, why, why are they coming to Hemet after the people that need support? Can you explain to the people about how the city works, when like, you go arrested, you go to prison, you go to jail, whatever your sentence may be, when you're released on probation, what happens? You have to be released back to, back to the city that you were arrested from to follow up on your probation. Well, can you explain that to people, or at least how, so they'll understand why people come back to Hemet?
Well, it goes back to that affordability, right? Because I, I had mentioned, when people get released out of prison, they usually don't have a whole lot of money. And so where do they go? Well, they're, they're getting released to family members, and, you know, they've got family members that live here. There was a, a county board, a board of supervisors meeting, I want to say it was probably two months ago now, where the, the director of prisons or the, the county probation, I think it was the county probation, talked about and, and mentioned Hemet by name, that that there was.
Lucky us.
Yeah, lucky us, and so it, it, Hemet was mentioned, and it wasn't just Hemet, I think Riverside was mentioned, but Hemet was mentioned, and it's unfortunate that they didn't talk to the, the city, talk to our police chief prior to that, because it, that's where all these questions were coming out, why are they being released to Hemet? Why are more people being released to Hemet? It comes down to when people are released out of prison, they're going, they're being released to, to family members or, or where they were at, at the time of their arrest originally. So, you know, there's, people live here in Hemet because it's affordable, that's why they come here.
So it's not like that these guys are actually being arrested in San Bernardino or LA, and when they get out, they're not being told, hey, go to Hemet?
No.
It's nothing like that, and that's what I want to.
Yeah, and it's not like that.
Clear up to the public.
And you can look at the, the city's finances.
Right.
To see that there's no, you can go on all the revenue sources and see that there's no money coming.
Right.
From, one, the state of California to house people or bring people to, to Hemet.
Exactly.
And two, there's, it's not coming from the county to do it, and it's not coming from LA to do it. But, so you can see that in the actual budget document.
Right.
For the city. Uh, but, you know, it's, it comes back to, they come to Hemet because it's more affordable here. We're still affordable in an unaffordable California.
Right.
Very good point.
That's why I came to Hemet, I didn't even know where I was going, and I just sent a road going to Hemet, I was, go check it out.
Well, Eddie.
I fell in love with this town, and.
Yeah, you and me both.
And now you can't get rid of me, folks, I don't care how hard you try.
Well, they actually come here now, I found out, they actually come here because you're here.
Oh, no, don't, don't tell me that, I'll leave, I'll leave.
I, I came to Hemet 20 years ago, and I'm still here.
Right.
Because it's a great town, I've made great friends.
I have too, I mean, this is.
The people here in Hemet are great.
And Michael, speaking about that, you, you just, you were master arms in, in the Navy.
Right.
Uh, you were sort of reserve police officer? You were sort of reserve police officer, or part-time, reserve police officer. So law and order has always been a big thing. You come here to Hemet about 20 years ago, and you became a realtor, you've been a Realtor now for about 15?
15 years.
15 years.
Yeah, I commuted, when I first moved here, I commuted to San Diego still, and so I made that drive down, down to San Diego, and, so I get the commute, because I did it for years, and, but, but after I got out of the Navy, I was able to stay working in Hemet, because that's, I got my real estate license when I was in the Navy still, and so I jumped into that, right after I got out of the Navy.
Right, and a good, I think another good, good question, just a few, few more things, but you spoke a little about business, tell us about the business climate in Hemet. Again, I think it may come down to the mix on the city council, to kind of lessen the restrictions and the paperwork, and to bring in new businesses, and just talk a little bit about bringing business, large and small, to.
Yeah, I want to make sure that, that our staff has the tools necessary to be able to make decisions quickly from the counter. So, when it comes to business, and somebody bringing a business to any city, right, time is money when it comes to the business, so if, if we can, if we can make it less, take, make it take less time to get through the process, and get people open for business in Hemet, than our competition, Santa Sento, or our competition, Menifee, then we're doing a good thing, because, again, it goes back to that time is money. If we can get it done in a fraction of the time, other cities are doing it, then good on us. So, I mean, it's, we need to, we need to make sure that, that we have a process, and that our staff is, is empowered and able to be able to make decisions from a counter level, to get projects through quickly.
Got it. Sort of an out of left field question, but I think when you're sort of trying to change things, and you're, you're meeting headwinds, what's been your biggest frustration over the, your first term, your first four years?
How slow it is, getting change made, but it's, a lot of that is by design, government is supposed to be slow, to protect the people, right? So, you know, Ronald Reagan once said, you know, government is not the solution, government is the problem. And so, it's, it's true, I mean, it's, government is supposed to, government has its purpose, and the safety of the public is one of the biggest functions, especially at the local level. So I'm not worried about, I'm not talking about the federal level or the state level here, it's, we're at a local level here, and that's what I'm running for, is a local, at the local level, and so, but that still holds true, you know, it's, even when I was in law enforcement, or when I was in the Navy, you know, hey, I'm, I'm with the government, I'm here to help, right?
Right, thank you, no thank you.
And I joke with that, because, you know, a lot of times, government, it's, it's designed to be slow, for a reason, and that's been, I want to get things done.
Right.
You know, let's stop spending time on it, let's get it done, and, and in government, it's, it's, takes time. You know, and we've got, there's a line, when you're in the, when you're in government, you've got to abide by the Constitution. People have their rights, and it's not like being the private sector, where it's, this is the way it is, or give me this, or that, for, in exchange for something. In the government, it's, you know, it's, you got to protect the people's rights.
And so, what, sort of following up on that, what do you look forward to when you're elected again?
To be able to continue to be a positive voice for Hemet. You know, I look at all the years that, that I've been not in politics, I mean, politics for me is very recent. You know, I look at, what, what does, even, you know, when I was working, and, and, and I still work, because this doesn't pay the bills, but, but, you know, the, the average person out there doesn't really, I don't want to say they don't care about local government, because they do in a sense, but they don't care about the inner workings of it. They just want to know that the streets are paved, that the sidewalks are good, the parks are good, the schools are good, and there's not any type of scandal going on.
Exactly.
And, and they, because their focus is putting, keeping a roof over their head, putting food on the table, and caring for their family. So they want to make sure, they, you know, it's like the, it's, it's kind of like the, you know, the dog, you want to, you want to, when you have a dog, you want to know it's there, but not know it's there, type of thing, right? And that's kind of with government, you want government to know it's there, to make sure that infrastructure is, is in good working order, that when you turn the faucet on, there's water coming out, when you flip on the lights, the lights come on.
Yeah, my dad was in politics for years in Philly, so, but Andy used to say, all you want for your taxes is to make sure the government's got your back.
Yeah, and it's, but, so for the, for the average person out there, and, because I was, you know, I still consider myself the average person, you know, I'm a hardworking guy, wants to make sure I got a roof over my family's head.
Two, two boys?
Two boys, yeah, and two granddaughters.
And two, what, two grandkids?
Two grandkids now, two granddaughters.
Now you have what, seven more, and we get Joe Miles, right?
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
A baseball.
So, yeah, so it's, that's what's important to me, is making sure that city of Hemet government functions, so that the, the, the average person out there doesn't have to think about it, they can do what they've got to do to take care of their family and, and that.
Got it. Now, short question for me, but a long answer for you, because it's here to here to here to here. So you are running for District Three?
District Three.
Michael Percival, District Three. Now, give us the definition, where is District Three?
District Three is, so we'll, if we take a little drive, we'll start it at Stetson and Palm, so everything from Stetson and Palm, going north of Stetson, take Stetson all the way to the western city limit, which is just past the canal, follow the canal to Florida Avenue, go east on Florida Avenue, so now it's in between Florida Avenue and Stetson, to Costin, at Costin you make a left, go north on Costin, to Menlo, Menlo to Lyon, and it, so now it's everything in between Stetson and Lyon, from Costin, or Stetson to Menlo, Costin to Lyon, go, take Lyon south all the way to Whittier, and then go east on Whittier, and it encompasses all of Seardon south.
Only a Realtor could do that, and do it consistently, and have it come out correctly, because you got to know everything. So, so in the few seconds that we have, so, so what would you like to leave people with, besides Michael Percival, District Three? I'm not going to ask him to repeat it again, but what, what would you like to leave people with?
That hopefully that I have done a good job in the last four years for the citizens of Hemet, and especially the District Three, to be able to carry that on, and hopefully that I've earned the trust of, of the voters in the third district, to be able to move forward and continue to do that.
Excellent. Michael, thank you, bless you, good luck.
Thank you, my pleasure.
All right. Ed, I think we're going to send it home to you. He had to step out.
So now Eddie's behind the camera.
Hopefully he gets that squirrel.
I'll just sit over here by you, Michael.
Oh, golly.
Hopefully I can bounce off of your guys' mics.
Between with this shirt and this, it's kind of the age of Aquarius.
Yeah, I know, I feel good, I mean, you got good taste in your office.
By the way, I am not going out for a safari, the police don't send any cops, the first thing Michael said, I said, I know, my buddy was calling me out back, Jack, this is, I don't have a pith helmet, I'm not going out, it's not.
Well, Michael, I definitely want to say I appreciate all the good work that you have done with the city, I've seen you fight for the people a lot. A lot of people I've noticed in the last forum that we did with all the council, candidates and everything, people made comments like, well, if you've already been in office for so many years, why haven't you changed this or changed that while you were in office? And I want to stress to the people, a lot of time it's because of the majority that we have out there, you throw in the votes, standing for the people, but you get outvoted by the, we call it, I call it, the good old boys, I can say that, you can't, so, but, you know, that's why.
I call it the majority.
The majority, that's, that's a nicer way to put it, professional way to put it, but, you know, I'm not professional, I'm just a help, Billy telling you like he is, you know. And in my experience of watching the city councils and everything, I've always seen you vote for the people, what stands for the people, but the minority, the majority, as you call it, you know, vote against the people, and.
Well, it's, it's, so here's, let me, let me kind of back up a little bit, is that we, all of us on council, we get along, so we're not like, we're not, it's not like ugly and that, and where the big difference is, is that we, when I say we, Carly and I, on a lot of things, will challenge staff.
Right.
So, we want to make sure that staff is being professional, because the taxpayers of Hemet deserve that, and if they haven't done something that is, meets that threshold, then we'll call them on it, and, and that's, that's that accountability. You know, I'm held accountable to the, to the voters, the city manager is held accountable to the council, and staff, all the city staff is accountable to the department heads, who's accountable to the city manager. So, that, I mean, you're spot on, Eddie, is that my vote has always been to make sure that the citizens of Hemet, the taxpayers of Hemet are getting their money's worth, and making sure that, that our staff is, is top-notch, and making sure that all the i's are, or i's are dotted, and all the t's are crossed. And that's, I mean, it's important.
And I will say, and I didn't say this earlier, but I, I will tell you that I know several people in, people in your district, and they just absolutely love you, and they helped us kind of formulate some of these questions, and ask you some of these questions. But you touched on something, so take, you know, coming from Philadelphia, where we had a strong mayor type of local government, give us an idea, I mean, I, I don't really even know if people know, Robin Lowe and I had wanted to, to sort of come out with a civics 101 when I was in the district, but to kind of explain to people, because you hear a lot of complaints, and when you hear some of those complaints, you think, what you just said makes no sense, you don't understand our, our form of, of local government. So, take us through that, the difference, and we have a five-person.
Five-person council, the city manager takes direction from council majority, so whatever the, if, on whatever is presented, however, if, whatever, it's a three or more vote on, because there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that goes through council that's approved on a five, 5-0 vote, a lot of.
Right, a lot of it.
A lot of it goes through on a 5-0 vote. But where you get that three-two, so it's the three, that when, when something gets passed on a three-two vote, we still, it's passed, and so the city manager takes that direction. So, in Hemet, it's a, it's a city manager-operated city, the council provides a direction through the budget process, we don't write the budget, the budget is brought to the city manager from all the department heads, so the department heads formulate a budget based on what the city manager says, this is what we're projecting, the budget's going to look like, the income, the revenue's going to look like, and so the department heads then present what their budget will look like for each department, and then the city manager presents that to council.
In this case, it's Chris Lopez, he takes, and then he's, he's always been there to, to answer any questions, wonderfully actionable. So, so he takes the, the department heads, he takes the budget, then sort of collates that, and sears the plan, and then brings it back to.
Right, and so if that plan doesn't meet what the council plan is, and then when I, and when I say council plan, we take direction from the voters, the residents of our district, so if it doesn't meet their plan, then we don't vote, we vote no on it, or vote it down, but there's times that we, we give input, I mean, you know, it's, what is, what is a priority to us as a council member, because that's a priority to our constituents. You know, we provide input, but at the end of the day, when the budget comes to us, if that's in there or not, so that's one of the ways, one of the mechanisms for a council. The other mechanism is, again, bring forth a proposal, which then comes as a resolution or an ordinance or whatever, or a motion at council to be voted on, and if the majority votes on it, three or more, then that's, that's giving direction to the city manager.
Right, and, and now, again, I mentioned the strong mayor, it's usually a larger population, but so, now, what is the role of the mayor in our system?
So, so in our system.
Did you held that?
I did, and she, and, yeah, the mayor rotates, the mayor position rotates through council, so we're all council members.
Unless it comes to Carly Meyer, we notice she, she always gets.
Yeah, she got, you know, I, I made the motion for her to be the mayor, and it got shot down, because the majority didn't want her there. So, how does that work?
Can I stop you right there? I feel the majority don't want her there, is because they know that she's going to stand for the people, and I'm sorry, I mean, this is just my opinion, you know, you know, it's like, I see Carly out there all the time, she busts her butt for the city, you know.
Yeah, she's got a lot of heart for this town.
She does, Carly's got a big heart for this town, just like you do, and I've always noticed, when it comes time for Carly to run for mayor, it's like, they don't want her there, because are they afraid that she's going to do a better job, I don't know, I mean, I, where's the mayor at when the COVID, you know, everything hit? All I've seen was you and Carly out there making noise for the people.
And Michael, we're not trying to put you in a, in a tough spot, so we're not, let's, let's not.
And I'm not taking it that way. So here's, to get back to your point, what is the, what's the mayor's role? So we're not a strong mayor city, so the mayor is not a full-time, it's the mayor in Hemet is a council person. One vote, just like my one vote. The only difference that the mayor has, is that the mayor can add things to the agenda, the mayor can say, I want this on the agenda, and get it on there, that's one of the, one of the things. And then the mayor runs the meeting, and the mayor signs the checks.
Got it. And our mayor plays a mean guitar, but, I mean, I don't.
You know, Russ has got some talent when it comes to being a musician, I'll give him that. But, you know, and Russ is a nice guy, you know, I get, I get along with Russ just fine, you know, he's a, he's a retired cop from Claremont, so.
Had a wonderfully insightful conversation with him, first time out at the base.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it comes back to, I mean, if you look at, if you look at like a corporate board, if you will, the CEO runs the day-to-day operations of a corporation, the city manager in Hemet runs the day-to-day operations, the staff are the, are the city manager's staff, they're, they're not my staff, they're, they, the staff, they're the staff of the city manager. And so the city manager runs the day-to-day operations based on direction from the board, being the council.
Got it. And before we close, John is back, Mr. Cameron, but before we close, right, would you, Michael, would you like to leave any final, any final message?
A final, final?
A final, final, because Eddie.
A P S P S?
A final, final.
Yeah, I just, I, I just humbly, humbly ask for your vote to get re-elected to the city council, to continue to put the community of Hemet first, and continue to bring forth and get, get, get Hemet moving in the right direction. This whole COVID thing has been a big, huge slowdown for us.
But again, it's been wonderful speaking with you, thank you so much.
Sign here, Michael, keep up the good work, I definitely appreciate you.
It's always good work.
I'm going to leave you hanging.
I know you are.
So y'all remember, you get those ballots in the mail, I know everybody's been getting them lately, make sure you do, check that mark for Michael Pierceville, and.
District Three, Michael Pierce.
Exactly, we got it signed right here, I'm going to throw a pillow at Mike, and there it is, District Three, right there, make sure you do count your vote, keep the man in office. My opinion, between Joe Miles, Carly Meyer, and Michael Pierceville, I think would have the minority, or the majority for the people this time, and that's my opinion, you can vote against it, or you can vote with me, I don't care how you do it, but I say we keep Michael Pierceville in office, let's keep Carly Meyer in office, and let's get Joe Miles in office. So make sure you do your votes correctly, folks, and put your vote where it counts.
So I will say this one last thing, since we're talking about voting and getting your vote out there, is just remember this, that I'm running locally, but all those state ballot initiatives have an impact on what can happen, what will happen locally here in Hemet.
Good point, thank you.
So there you go, ladies and gentlemen, you heard it from the accountant, Michael Pierceville. I've seen Michael do a lot of work in this city, he's always been about the people, and not about the pockets, folks, and that's what we need in our town, in our community. So make sure you do share this video comment that you shared, and we'll be watching the shared list, and we'll be picking some names out of the shared list, and I'll give away some free Boyd burgers food.
We didn't have tonight the Ann Smith Show.
That's right, yeah, I think Ann Smith is.
Michael, I think you were right, tying her hands and sticking that sock in her mouth.
Never did I say that.
I'm joking, joking. So, Ann, hello.
All right, well, that's my story, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sticking to it, I'm glad to be able to have this opportunity to allow Hemet News to be the platform for candidates. And I do want to say something real quick, I hope everybody can hear me between these two guys' microphones over here, but, you know, I did put out on my news page, you know, that Hemet News is not going to allow political posts on our page, and I want to straighten that out a little bit to the people of the public that does want to complain about it, you know, well, when it comes to politics, you know, no Trump, no stuff like that, because people get bent out of shape too much. This is a political deal in our local city, that I think that the people here in our city needs to know, they need to hear from these guys, and when it comes to our local city officials, you know, I will, and I am going to, and will continue to allow our local city politics to be on our page, because it's of our city, and you, the people that's on our page, is the one that makes the count when you throw your vote in. So that's why I am opening up Hemet I News as a platform for our local city, not just Hemet, but also San Jacinto as well too, because, you know, these are our people that can make a change in our city, and it can start by your vote, that's the only way that we can do it, folks. So, that's my story, and that's all I got to say. This is Eddie George with HemetINews.com. Again, I want to say thank you for Mark, for you coming out, hosting the questions, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And I also want to say shout out to John Strangus with E and Media Productions.